To start, I'd like to do a roll call of the commissioners who are present. I will call each commissioner's name and just ask for you to confirm that you're present. So to start, Commissioner Blackshear.
Present.
Commissioner Gobble.
Present.
Commissioner Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Sims.
Present.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Present.
Great, thank you all so much. The next order of business is we need to go ahead and establish the telephonic meeting. As you all know, since this is our third or fourth telephonic meeting, we have to vote on the record that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we're required to hold a telephonic meeting as required or as permitted by the Governor's Executive Order Number 16, and that contrary rules are suspended. But I believe we want to hear directly from our legal counsel for this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Farr. I don't know that I could have put it any better than what you just did, but state and local law requires that all metro boards and commissions meet in person. However, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor has entered an executive order that allows boards and commissions to meet electronically or telephonically. However, before they do so, there must be a motion made and approved that the work or the business of that board is essential and that carrying on electronically or telephonically is needed to protect the health and safety, health, safety, and well-being of Tennesseans. So, Vice Chair, if you would solicit a motion to that effect, we shall proceed.
Sounds great. And I see I already have a hand raised from our very experienced councilwoman. Commissioner Murphy, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I'd love to. For what I think is the third or fourth time this week, I would like to move that this meeting, our agenda constitutes essential business and that we meet by electronic means for the health and safety of Tennesseans.
Wonderful, thank you. Do I have someone willing to volunteer to second that motion? Commissioner Tibbs.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other discussion on the, or anyone want to make any comments on this motion? If not, I will do a roll call to confirm the vote. Commissioner Blackshear.
In favor.
Commissioner Gobble.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, are you on mute?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. The next item of business for us is the adoption of the agenda. I think we received an updated agenda just shortly ago from Kelly. So do I have anyone willing to propose a motion to adopt our agenda? And I'm sorry, I have to scroll through a lot of names to see you guys. If anyone is willing to raise their hand. Oh, Commissioner Gobble, thank you.
I'm a member of adoption of the agenda, submitted.
Great. Great, and Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Tibbs.
I'll second that. Yep, I second that motion.
Are there any other comments on this motion? Please raise your hand. Let me scroll through quickly, double check. All in favor, I'm going to do a roll call vote again. Commissioner Blackshear.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gobble.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Great, thank you, motion carries. The next order of, next agenda item for us is the approval of the May 28th minutes. Do I have someone willing to make a motion to approve? Commissioner Johnson.
I make a motion to approve May 28th minute.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sims, would you like to second that?
I second that.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion on this? Please feel free to raise your hand if you have any, any points of discussion. Commissioner Sims, I think your hand is still up, or do you have a point of discussion? Thank you. Okay, I will do another roll call vote to approve the minutes. Commissioner Blackshear.
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Great. The next item on our agenda is the recognition of council members. And I understand that we have several in the room. Councilman Hagar, if you would like to speak now or wait until we discuss your item, we'll leave it to you. Just make sure you unmute yourself if you would like to speak now.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I've got number 14 on the agenda. They have asked that be deferred to the June 25th date, which is signed with me. And then I believe I still have 23A and 23B. Is it still on the consent agenda?
Lisa or Lucy, can you address that?
Yes, hi, this is Lisa. Those items are on consent. We did not receive any notes of opposition.
Okay, I'll move to approve those. And I appreciate y'all allowing me to be through the virtual meeting. And I will leave at this point in time, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilperson Hancock, are you on the line? And would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until your item is up?
Hi, I am on the line. Thank you very much for having me. And I'd like to wait until my item number 30 is on, is on the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Councilwoman Burcher, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line and thank you so much. I would like to speak on my agenda item now.
Okay, thank you.
I see it's been deferred to the June 25th meeting. And I am in agreement with that. Hopefully, the developer can contact us, us being myself and the Neighborhood Association over there. So, in agreement with the June 24th deferral.
And Councilwoman, what item number was that that you were speaking on?
I'm so sorry. It's 201.
I believe it's item five.
Okay.
Yeah, Payne Road Estates.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, this is Lucy. I'm just confirming you're talking about the Payne Road Estates. That was item number five. And we'll let the applicant know, send him those comments. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is the property where we've had some, several issues with the, with some of our departments, specifically Metro Water and Stormwater. This applicant has been, has been cited for non-compliance, even before the concept plan approval. He's in violation of grading and so forth. Metro Water has all, has all those, has all those details. So that's why we've kind of been deferring it and trying to work with the applicant. But I haven't been, haven't been able to contact the applicant. And I don't know where that stands with Metro Water or where it stands as it relates to. I don't know if they're going to go to court or not, I don't know.
Thank you for that update. Anything further?
No, that's it, thank you so much.
Okay. I don't think we have any other council members joining us at this time. So with that, we will go on to the item, the deferral agenda. And Lisa, would you like to present the deferral agenda?
Yes, we have the following items that are listed for deferral. Item number 1A on page five of your agenda, 2020 CP 005001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Item 1B, 2020 SP 021001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. Item 2A on page six of your agenda, 2020 CP 006001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. The associated case 2B, 2020 Z 052 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. Item number 3, 2020 CP 010001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th Planning Commission meeting. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 4, 2020 SP 012001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 5 on page seven of your agenda, 2015 S 166002. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 6, 2019 S 086001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 7, 2020 S 066001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 8, 2020 S 102001. Staff recommendation is to defer for case to be reviewed administratively. Item number 9 on page eight of your agenda, 2020 Z 007 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item 10A, 2020 Z 008 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item 10B, 6177 P 004. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item 11A, 2020 Z 009 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item 11B on page nine of your agenda, 88P 029001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 12, 2017 NHL 002003. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 13, 2020 S 105001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 14, 2020 S 041001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 15, 2020 SP 023001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 16 on page 10 of your agenda, 2020 S 05400. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 17, 2018 S 209001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 18, 2020 S 103001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 19, 2020 Z 071 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. Item number 20, 2019 SP 009001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. Item number 21 on page 11 of your agenda, 2020 Z 027 PR 001. Staff recommendation to the June 25th meeting. Item number 22, 2012 NL 001003. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 26, 2020 DTC 031001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 25th meeting. Item number 29, 2020 S 098001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23rd meeting. And item number 31, 2020 Z 028 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Great, thank you so much, Lisa. Commissioners, you've heard the list for the deferral agenda. Do, I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Tibbs.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
The deferral agenda, the deferral agenda.
Yes, yes. I make a motion to approve the deferral agenda.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Murphy, I'm sorry, Commissioner Murphy, would you like to second that?
I would like to second that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any, any discussion on these items? Please look through my list. If not, I will do a roll call to approve the deferral agenda. Commissioner Blackshear.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gobble.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to pause for a second. I understand that we have two new council members who have joined us. And I just wanted to give them an opportunity, since we've just gone through the recognition of council members. But I thought I would offer the opportunity if they want to speak now instead of waiting until their items come up. Councilman Parker, I understand that you are on the line. Councilman Parker. I will give him one moment.
I'm sorry.
Let's see, Councilman Parker, are you on the line? And would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until we discuss your item? Okay. Councilman Polley, would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until we discuss your item?
I don't need to speak, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Well, with that, I will go back to our regular, regular agenda. And we are on to the consent agenda, Lisa.
The following items are included on the consent agenda. Item number 23A on page 11 of your agenda, 2019 CP 014001. Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan from District Industrial to Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance for property located on Swinging Bridge Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 23, 23B, the associated case, 2019 Z 158 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS to RS10 for property located on Swinging Bridge Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 24, 2020 SP 024001. The Hamilton and Hagan SP. It's a request to rezone from IR, OR 20, and IWD to SP for properties located on Moore Avenue and Hamilton Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 25 on page 12 of your agenda, 2019 S 16001. The 1242 Property Solutions LLC property. It's a request for final plat approval to create nine lots on property located on Eisenhower Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under other business, item 32, an employee contract renewal for Lisa Milligan. And item 36, to accept the director's report.
Great, thank you so much, Lisa. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Commissioner Johnson.
I make a motion to approve all consent agenda.
Wonderful, thank you. Do I have a second, Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you, any other discussion on these items? If not, I will do another roll call for the vote. Commissioner Blackshear.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gobble.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Thank you, the consent agenda passes. We are now on to the items that we will be hearing this evening. And I just, to make it easier for the listeners at home, Lisa, can you repeat for everybody the items that we will be hearing?
Certainly, the following items will be heard. Item 27, the Brentwood Skyline Amendment. Item 28, 829 Dickerson Pike SP. And item 30, Robin Hood condominiums pud cancellation.
Great, thank you. So those are the three items that we will be hearing this evening. And for all listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways to participate in this telephonic meeting. Normally, what we do is take the applicant first, and then supporters, and then opponents. Because of the different ways that people are participating, we'll be taking forward and opponents together. To help us with that, please, when you do call in and make your comments, please state your name, your address, and whether or not you oppose or support the request. So for the first case, as usual, we were emailed through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. And at the start of each public hearing, Lisa is going to give us a summary of how many email comments we have been, have we received on that item. In addition, we've taken voice recordings through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. And those will be played live during the meeting. And thank you to anyone who took the time to call in advance for keeping your comments within the two-minute time. We have also, the third option is provided a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. But please wait until the public hearing for your item begins before you start calling. And it's a queue, and we don't want to end up having you testify for the wrong case. For each of the items that we're hearing this evening, we'll let you know when it is time to call in. And I will ask Lisa for a count of the email comments on each item to give you time, I'll introduce to our operators. And now with that, I'm ready to begin our first item. Planning staff is also working remotely, and Lisa will be operating the slides for us. So Lisa, can you go ahead and pull up the slides for the first agenda item? And I think we're ready to begin.
Commissioner Farr, this is Lucy. Just as Lisa's pulling up the slides, I wanted to remind members of the public and the commission that there is a delay between what the television shows and what's on our screen. And that's a required delay. But for folks who want to speak, know that you should just pay attention to what's on your screen, not on the television, in terms of the timing.
Thank you, Lucy. All right, so item 27, the Brentwood Skyline Amendment. I think we're ready to begin.
Hi, everyone, this is Amelia Lewis presenting item 27. The request is to amend the Brentwood Skyline specific plan to permit an additional 55 residential units for a total of 195 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The zoning for the site is currently SP, specific plan. The site is generally located south of Old Hickory Boulevard and east of Interstate 65, near the terminus of Stone Brook Drive. The surrounding properties are primarily residential with some commercial development to the west. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a little bit of history on the site. In 1989, a planned unit development or a pud was approved for the site. This pud approved a seven-story office building that permitted up to 130,000 square feet of office space across the whole site. And then in 2015, the site was rezoned to SP, specific plan. The SP that was permitted on this site was for 140 units with a proposed building footprint of 38,000 square feet, so much smaller than the original pud that was approved. This proposal also decreased the amount of disturbance on an environmentally sensitive site from the previously approved PUD. This is the current zoning on the site. And their current entitlements on the site are what was approved in the 2015 SP. And so then today, the proposed amendment would permit an additional 55 units for a total of 195 units with a similar building footprint that we will look at on the next slide. Here is the proposed plan for the SP amendment that we are looking at today. The building footprint is nearly identical to what was approved in 2015. It's a seven-story U-shaped building located near the southern property line of the site. The first two levels of the building are parking with five levels of residential units above. The internal portion of the U-shaped building contains the two vehicular drive entrances into the garage. And given the slopes on the site, a portion of the parking levels that are on those first two are slightly covered by the ground. There's also, within that U shape of the building, a proposed surface parking lot and clubhouse. Next slide, please. The policies have not changed on the site since the original SP approval. The suburban neighborhood evolving policy areas are intended to be suburban in nature with higher density and housing varieties than typical suburban neighborhoods. The requested additional intensity is consistent with the intent of the policy to provide higher-density suburban development. In 2015, with the approved SP, the Planning Commission found that plan to be less intense given the environmental constraints on the site and consistent with conservation policy. Given that the footprint of the proposed plan isn't really changing, staff has also continued to find this plan consistent with the CO policy. Next slide, please. And with the limited changes to the existing SP and consistency with the policy, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. That's all for me.
Great, thank you so much, Amelia. Is the applicant on the line? I'm looking, and I'm not sure I see anybody. Lisa or Lucy?
Vice Chair Farr, this is Sean Shepherd at the call center. We're working, the applicants are on the line. We're working to unmute them currently, so bear with us just a moment.
Great, thank you so much.
This is Jim Lukens.
Great, thank you so much for letting me know you're here. I guess we're now ready to begin the public hearing. So as usual, you'll have 10 minutes for your presentation. And you may leave two minutes for rebuttal. And please make sure you state your name and address to begin.
Okay, this is Jim Lukens, Lukens Engineering. I'm the engineer applicant for the project, 4537 Winfield Drive, Nashville. 4537 Winfield Drive, Nashville. The, as stated, the project is an approved SP, so we're really just trying to get more units within the same building structure. We've reviewed the conditions of approval and we're fine with everything on there. There is one thing I do want to clarify is the existing SP has a condition on there that states that we will have a traffic, the slope going up to the, to the building would require variance from the fire appeals board. The appeals board did not approve the 15% slope and, and so we're going to design per the fire marshal's comment of 10% unless approved. And we've already discussed that with him and he said that up to 12% will work fine with him. Otherwise, all the other conditions are fine. We have been meeting with, for several years, the Brentwood Villa homeowners board and we have informed them, you know, of this amendment and everything too. And one of the things that they've really stressed is the, they're concerned with blasting because of some structural issues they have with their units. And we have, we have committed to providing the blast studies and meeting with them and keeping them informed throughout the whole process. And those are conditions that are already in the existing SP that's approved. But we've just letting you know that we have been meeting with them off and on over the past few years while we've been trying to get this designed. And we hope for your approval on this and we will both go above if needed.
Great, thank you. Sean is keeping track of time and she will make sure that you have your two minutes for rebuttal after the public comment period. So with that, we are now ready to take calls from the public who wish to call in. And your screen should show the appropriate call-in number. As a reminder, please call in only for the current case. And when you begin your testimony, please state your name, your address, and whether you support or oppose this item. We're unable to display a timer visually, but Sean will be keeping track of time and she will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up. She will also let you know when your time is up so that we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. While we wait for callers to get into the queue, Lisa, did we receive any voicemails or emails on this item?
Yes, we received both voicemails and emails, or I'm sorry, we received one voicemail and emails. We received four emails in opposition and one voicemail. And I can play that voicemail now. Sean, did we need to give some instructions on the voicemail? Lisa, we have learned that depending on how the, the voicemail will play very clearly over the television. But depending on how participants in this meeting, the commissioners and the applicants have logged in for their audio, sometimes you may not be able to hear it clearly. So I think what we should do is maybe press play, let five seconds run, and then just ask the commissioners to confirm that they can hear the file before we play the whole thing. I know that's a little tedious, but we want to be very sure that the commissioners get the full comment.
Thank you Sean, that sounds good.
Okay, I'm going to press play and then wait five seconds, five to six seconds and then I'll stop.
Hi, this is Yvonne Smith at 119 Villa View Corp., with Tennessee, 37027.
Lisa, this is, yeah, I didn't hear anything. Other commissioners, did you hear anything?
This is Commissioner Blackshear, I heard it.
This is Commissioner Gobble, I heard it.
This is Pearl, I heard it.
This is Jennifer, I heard it.
Great, okay.
And Chair, I think that it may be that you are called in on your phone?
Phone.
Yes. And so if, I don't know if you might, if you can turn on the volume on your computer and you would be able to hear it then.
I can't do both at the same time and I don't want to risk losing the connection.
Okay.
So I will let the others hear.
Thanks.
And I'm calling, I'm calling about case number 2015SP-062-002. And I'm calling in opposition of this case. And the project location is Stone Brook Drive. Thank you, bye-bye.
Commissioner Farr, let me, I'm going to just suggest, given that you were unable to hear, I want to summarize that we heard from a caller who provided her name and she expressed opposition to the case. I'm gonna, following this meeting, consult with our attorneys about the use of the voicemail option because we understand how important it is for all of the commissioners to hear the information in the record.
Right.
But I think given that the content here was very sort of specific to just a statement of opposition, I don't see any concerns. But let me ask Kwan if he has any concerns.
Thank you, yes, I can hear, thank you Director. Yeah, the comments were basically just that they were in opposition. So I think they didn't really talk about anything specific or anything material. There was no reference to, for example, stormwater or any specific reference to how it abuts their property or how, how that might impact, how that would have controlled their opposition. So because it was just a general statement of opposition, I think it's fine for Vice Chair to continue in the discussion and be able to vote. If it's an ongoing, we can talk about the, the use or the ongoing use of voicemail if we're going to have these issues in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I think we're ready to hear from any callers that have called in for this item. Sean, do we have any callers?
Vice Chair Farr, at this point, we do not have any callers in the queue for this item. I think what we've been doing is taking just after I say this, a moment's pause to give folks just a little additional time to call in if they would like. And then I'll check back in with you in 45 seconds or so.
Great, thank you.
Vice Chair, we do not have any callers in the queue for this item, so you can feel free to move forward as you see fit.
Great, thank you so much Sean. With the applicant, you have two minutes reserved for rebuttal. I don't know if you have any, any thing you'd like to add?
No, I don't have anything else to add. The owner's committed to working with the Brentwood Villa community just to the south throughout the project to answer questions and work with them on, on any issues and everything during construction. And as far as I know, that's, that's the only community where people have raised any issues.
Great, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll turn to discussion with the commissioners. I'm just going to start alphabetically for this first case to make it easier. Commissioner Blackshear.
I just had a question for staff. If they could speak to the condition that the applicant was talking about during his presentation, if you could talk a little bit more about that, that'd be great.
Yeah, this is Amelia. So the applicant was referring to a condition that was originally included on the 2015 approval of the SP regarding the grade of the drive into the site. It was at that point beyond what is permitted by code for fire access. My understanding is that, from what the applicant said, that was not approved. And part of this amendment would be changing the entrance to the site with the, as you, I don't know if you can see it, but on the layout, it looks like they've graded a portion of the entrance to create that, to create this slope lower without, so fire and emergency access could get into the site. Commissioner Blackshear, do you have any, any further questions?
Sorry, I muted myself. That sounds, that sounds good. It sounds like it's a safer condition than what it was previously, is that right in my understanding of that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gobble.
Well, my only concern I've got with this is kind of related to that. It's a, it's a pretty steep side as I recall. And, and I know, you know, it's, I guess this asked staff if that's, they felt like they've handled that as well as possible with the solution.
In regards to the access into the site?
Well, not just access, but I mean, I think the whole property, I don't, yeah, the whole property's got a lot of, it's, it's high as hell, maybe the applicant's a better person to ask. I mean, is this going to have extensive retaining walls, et cetera?
Hi Commissioner Gobble, this is Lisa. So as we were reviewing the SP originally in 2015, because this is an amendment and this is essentially the same plan that was approved in 2015, we had a PUD that had already been approved on the property that was more impactful. And so the SP is, is creating less impact on the sensitive portions of the site. There will be some retaining walls that are necessary, but the SP is disturbing less of the site than the entitlements that existed at the time that the SP was approved.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation and listen to the other commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
No comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you Chair Farr. I think it's quite obvious, it was stated footprint has not expanded. So I'm assuming additional 55 units are going up, so height will be increased in that original or very similar to footprint? Am I reading it right?
Yes, the, the number of units would be increasing, however, the size of the building is not changing, sorry, size by height and by footprint. My understanding is that it's from a different unit layout and, but the footprint and the height are remaining the same from the previously approved plan.
Oh, okay, so that's great to know. So there's no height change. I was wondering how extra 55 units will be kind of included into the new plan. So the rail change, but no height, so, okay, so that makes me feel even better. So it is without saying or the sensitive condition and the future will be as previously approved, it will be protected without saying, or actually, it will not be changed. So for that, I think I'm inclined to support our staff recommendation.
Great, thank you Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. I think the staff has explained well. It is concerning to me whenever we see dense projects. I understand that this is less dense than the PUD that was originally in place, but from the map of the, the community policy, it looked like this whole, this parcel is like completely in the conservation policy. And so, I mean, staff has explained that some degree, but it always concerns me when, when it seems like conservation policy takes a backseat to everything else and the built environment. So I do have a little concerns because I have heard some, some, I guess the neighbors express concern over stormwater, just whether this was being increased or not, just the stormwater concerns of this property being built out, whether it was the old plan or the new plan. And so it sounds like that is being addressed and, and hopefully could be maybe addressed a little bit more by the councilman when we get to, get to counsel.
Thank you Council Lady, Commissioner Murphy. Do you have, do you want to hear from stormwater or are you, are you okay? I think we do have someone from stormwater on the line.
Yeah, I think it might be nice to just go ahead and have them explain that out and get that on the record, just so we can hear it and the community can, if they have questions, come back to hear it before we move forward. I think that would be beneficial, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is, this is Logan Bowman with Metro Stormwater. What I will say is, right now, this is kind of a large hill where you have multiple drainage basins, the drain in different directions. Most of the complaints that look like, as mentioned by the applicant, were in the Brentwood Villa area. So what, what they're going to be doing right now from looking at this plan is they're, they're going to be building a large detention pond at the south of the northwest area there. And they're going to have some sort of water quality treatment. It does look like under the original SP plans that were submitted and the grading permit that we have under review, they received a waiver to low-impact development due to shallow bedrock. So they'll most likely be using some sort of in-ground water quality unit to treat the water and then detain it after that. And they'll do any, any, any necessary improvements to the storm system downstream to, to get it to an adequate conveyance.
Commissioner Murphy, do you have any further questions for stormwater?
No, I think that covers it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sims?
I find the plan actually consistent with policy and consistent with the existing SP, so I'll agree with the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs?
I make a motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Okay, well, you are the last on the list, so you are free to do that. That is a proper motion, do I have? Commissioner Gobble?
A second.
Great, thank you so much. Any other discussion on this item? Please feel free to raise your hand. Seeing none, I will go ahead with the roll call vote. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. And the chair votes with the majority, so that is a eight to zero vote in favor of. Our next item for discussion is item 28. And Lisa, if you can bring the slides up, that would be great.
Hi everybody, this is Abby Rickoff and I'll be presenting item 28, which is the which is the 829 Dickerson Pike SP. Next slide. This is a request to rezone from Commercial Limited to specific planned mixed-use zoning for properties located at 829 and 835 Dickerson Pike to prevent a mixed-use development. Next slide. As a reminder, this case was deferred from the May 14th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting after a public hearing was held following staff's recommendation of disapproval because at that time, staff found the proposed heights to be inconsistent with the building height sub-district policy of the Dickerson South Corridor Study. The deferral was requested to allow staff sufficient time to discuss the overall intent of the supplemental building height sub-district policy and whether the building heights as proposed in the SP were consistent with the policy goal. The commission specifically requested that staff take another look at the policy framework and record and report back with our findings. Following the deferral, staff has had further conversations relative to the policy expectations in this area and the intent as articulated during the community planning process. Staff would like to mention that the policy framework is designed to be a broad-based decision-making tool, rather than a tool that contemplates each development scenario. Policy is not zoning. We do not see policy interpretations as exceptions to the policy. Rather, we use policy as a guide to help us assess what standards may be appropriate. The outcome of our conversations have been summarized in a memo prepared by staff that was published with the staff report. Staff's analysis, including our recommendation, has been updated to reflect further evaluation of the policy and its application to the proposed plan. No changes to the plans have been proposed. Next slide. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including a correction to condition number 13 to replace the reference to homeowners association with owners association. Next slide. As a refresher, this site is a little under one acre, located on the east side of Dickerson Pike, mid-block between Cleveland Street and Hancock Street. Existing buildings on the smaller parcel will be retained with this development. Alley number 309 runs along the back of the site and is generally the dividing line between the non-residential uses along the corridor and the residential uses to the east. The rear alley provides access to the properties which front onto Joseph Avenue to the east. Next slide. The existing CL zoning spans the east side of Dickerson Pike, where surrounding properties include primarily commercial and industrial uses. Next slide. The site plan is on the screen. Again, no changes have been proposed to the plan since your initial consideration at the May 14th meeting. I'll give a brief overview of the plan again to refresh your memories before going into the analysis. The site plan has been rotated on the slide with Dickerson now at the bottom, which is west-facing, and then the rear alley is at the top of the slide, which is east-facing. The plan includes a mixed-use building, including a 100-room hotel, retail, and restaurant, which fronts Dickerson Pike, with vehicular access provided from alley number 309. The building is four stories, with the fifth story, which will include additional hotel rooms, a restaurant, and fitness center. Next slide. The different building levels are identified here. Where the first level is shaded in green, levels two, three, and four are outlined in blue, and then level five is outlined in red. The majority of the building comprises the area outlined in blue, except for the first level where the parking cuts under the building. You can see where the fifth story, which is outlined in red, steps in from the blue line. Next slide. This is the rear view of the building from the alley. You can see the parking areas cut under the building's upper levels. And for context, the fifth story is circled in red. Next slide. This is the front of the building from Dickerson. Again, the portions of the building containing the fifth story have been circled in red. Pedestrian entries will connect to the sidewalk and standing strip, which will be installed to meet the major and collector's street plan requirements. And no vehicular access is proposed from Dickerson Pike. Next slide. The base policy is urban mixed-use corridor, and the site is within the Dickerson South Corridor Study, which includes a series of sub-districts that guide development intensity, where the goal is to increase intensity primarily west of Dickerson Pike and then stepping down in height from west to east until you reach the interior of the neighborhood, where, which should be maintained. General guidance from the study, which recommends four stories in this area, was analyzed in more detail following the May 14th Planning Commission meeting. Next slide. Staff has reevaluated the vision and goals of the Dickerson South Corridor Study against the proposed fifth story, per staff memo, which was attached to your staff report, and supports the plan as proposed for several reasons. The plan proposes redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties into a mixed-use development along a major corridor, which would generally be supported by the base urban mixed-use corridor policy. Next slide. The fifth story steps back from the lower levels along Dickerson Pike. The fifth story, again, which is within the red outline, is also set back from the alley at the rear of the site, which separates the site from the residential neighborhood to the east. This step back helps to keep the overall bulk of the fifth story closer to the corridor, rather than to the interior neighborhood, which forms a transition in scale and mapping as the building relates to the lower intensity policy areas to the east. It also prevents intrusive heights along the building's eastern edge, consistent with the general logic to step down in height from west to east. Next slide. The building meets several critical policy goals envisioned for the corridor, including street activation that prioritizes pedestrians in a tree-lined streetscape in place of head-in parking and driveway access points that have long dominated Dickerson Pike. Additionally, the inclusion of non-residential development along the corridor provides transit supportive uses and densities necessary for high-capacity transit services to succeed. Rideaway will be dedicated along the street frontage for pedestrian improvements and to accommodate high-capacity transit service, consistent with the major and collector's street plan requirements. The building frames the corridor with several pedestrian entries that have been identified on the plan. And these conceptual elevations include additional design detail to ensure street-level interaction, including blazing and facade treatment. Next slide. In this case, staff supports the SP as it fits into the broader policy goals for the area. Staff finds that the plan meets several critical planning goals and is consistent with the overall intent of the Dickerson South Corridor Study. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you very much, Abby. With that, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant on the line? Sean, can you help us with that?
I'm here.
Vice Chair, you do have.
Oh, but do they need to vote tomorrow?
Vice Chair, you do have representatives of the applicant on the line.
Great, thank you so much. As a reminder to the applicant, you'll have 10 minutes. And Sean will be keeping track of time and will give you a two-minute warning. And you're welcome to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And please start with your name and address.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Aaron Armstrong, and I live at 1303 Forest Avenue in the East Nashville area. I appreciate the opportunity. I spoke in great detail during last month's Planning Commission meeting about what we felt the merits of the project are. So, I'll try to keep my comments this time short. On behalf of the entire development team, I would like to thank the Planning Department, the staff, as well as Councilman Parker and the McFerrin Park and Cleveland Park communities for engaging in what we feel was a very thoughtful dialogue about our proposed development at 829 and 835 Dickerson Pike. It's our sincere belief that the design of this project has been improved as a result of that public engagement process and through the consultation with the members of planning staff that's taken place since the commission meeting. So, we really appreciate everybody's input. We believe that the 829 and 835 Dickerson project will support the stated goals of the Dickerson South Study. We're prioritizing the pedestrian experience along a prominent corridor, providing ground floor, activating the ground floor spaces, a tree-lined sidewalk, and through relegating the vehicular activity to the rear of the site. Based on the merits of the project and all the work put in by the planning staff, we respectfully ask for you to consider adopting staff's recommendation and voting in favor of approval of this project. So, with that, I'd like to leave the rest of my allotted time to respond to additional comments from the public or questions from the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Farr, this is Lucy. I apologize for interrupting. I do have a procedural matter. I just couldn't quite get the unmute done. The commission did close the public hearing at the last meeting. You and I had talked about that it'd probably be better to go ahead and reopen it since you asked staff to sort of report back on some additional research. But I do think it's important from a procedural perspective to make sure none of the other commissioners have a, would be opposed to reopening the public hearing. And then I would include that as part of a, of a motion to move forward.
I will. I'm so sorry for forgetting that. Commissioners, as, as the director just noted, we did close the public hearing at the last, at the last, the last time we heard this. But as she noted, there's been some additional review, and we have now heard from the applicant. So, I do want to confirm with the commission that there is an interest in reopening the public hearing? And if so, someone would like to make a motion to that effect. Commissioner Tibbs?
Make a motion to reopen public hearing.
Thank you so much. And do I have a second? Commissioner Johnson?
Good chair, I second the motion.
Great, thank you so much. Any discussion on this item? Seeing, hold on. Seeing none, I will go through the roll call vote again. Commissioner Blackshear?
I'm not voting on this matter, so I'm not sure if it is appropriate for me to.
Sorry. Sorry about that. I will. Commissioner Gobble?
I, I was not at the May 14th meeting, but I was, I did watch it on YouTube. So, I've got, heard the comments. And I'm inclined to support the staff's recommendation, but I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Okay, we're actually just voting on reopening the public hearing at this point, so.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm, I'm reopening it, sorry.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
I'm okay with reopening the public hearing.
Thanks. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great, so with that, we will go ahead and reopen the public hearing. We have heard from the applicant, so I apologize for taking us out of order. But we're now ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. And your screen should show a call-in number. As a reminder, please only call in on this one specific case. And when you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose this item. We're not able to display the timer visually, but Sean will be keeping track of time, and she will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up. She'll also let you know when your time is up so that we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. So, while we wait for callers to get into the queue, Lisa, did we receive any voicemails or emails on this item?
Hi, we did not receive any voicemails. We did receive emails. We received 18 emails in support and three emails in opposition.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with no voice messages, I guess, Sean, is there anyone who has called in on this item?
Vice Chair, we have no callers in the queue. So, we'll take a pause for about a minute. I'll run a timer on that, and then I'll check back in with you once we've allowed some time for folks to call if they'd like to do so.
Great, thank you.
Hi, caller, this is Anna with the Planning Department. I'm about to put you into the meeting. You'll have two minutes, if you wouldn't mind muting any device for streaming the meeting on.
And Vice Chair, we do have a caller.
Okay.
And the caller should be in the meeting now.
Hello.
Great, well, welcome. Please, you'll have two minutes, and please start with your name and address.
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Vice Chair, I have paused the timer so we can figure out if we're having difficulty connecting to the caller. So, we won't be using his time. We're just going to try to work through the technical issue.
Great.
And the caller, which should be.
Hello?
Welcome, please, you don't have two minutes, but please start with your name and address.
Well, my name is Ben Jordan. My address is 1011 North Fifth Street. I'm a resident of 14 years in this community. I've attended the South Dickerson Corridor planning meetings. And I'm calling in opposition to the approval of this. I believe that Commissioner Sims, as well as several others of you, had it right on the first meeting on the 14th of last month. The policy is pretty clear, and it's distressing to the community to see that now the policy has shifted somehow because of a memo. I believe we got some very capable and, and learned people working within the staff. And I believe if this was something that was available and within the scope of the plan, it would have been rolled out, and these allowances would have been made, and exceptions would have been made within the policy as it's, as it's written. But here we are now, and I want to thank Commissioner Sims for being sensitive about the community's input and the concerns around this community that's going to be affected here. And so, what I suggested to you was vote to disapprove this particular zoning request because it does not fit the policy. And the policy, and several of you at the last meeting made mention that it's just not within the letter of the policy, and.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, do we have any other callers?
We do not have any other callers in the queue at this time. So, we'll just take a moment of pause and see if anyone else is trying to call in, and then I'll check back in.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, we have another caller, and they are in the meeting now.
Great, thank you so much. If you can just start with your name and address, you'll have two minutes.
My name is Waddell Wright. I live at 1061 Second Avenue South. I'm a local developer, and I'm not as supportive of this project as I have a project right down the road from here. I feel the councilman is inconsistent with his policy. I had a development that was approved by planning that fit the Dickerson Corridor Study. It fit the East Nashville Corridor Study. It was four stories, and we were going for a height baron of about five feet. And the councilman would not support it. But then, there's a development, this particular development here, which is six-story, which was not in the policy. Six-story is actually across the street, and that now he's in support of a building. So, I feel like there's inconsistent policy that's happening in his district against developers for, I don't know what the reasons are, but I'm asking the commission to disapprove this. for, I don't know what the reasons are, but I'm asking the commission to disapprove this request.
Thank you very much. Sean, do we have any other callers?
Vice Chair, we have no other callers in the queue for this item.
Should we give it 45 seconds just to double check?
I think because we've had a period of time for folks to call while the other callers were calling, we would hope that people have had a chance. Certainly I'm taking up a little time by talking to you here, but the phone does not seem to be ringing, so...
Okay, okay. Well, with that, I will ask the applicant if you would like to use your two minutes for rebuttal.
I would, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. While I certainly respect the opinions of Mr. Jordan and Mr. Wright, it seems like Mr. Wright's frustration relates to another project that had difficulty getting approval. I was not a part of the development proceedings. I don't know what the neighborhood or the councilman's specific objections are. I do believe Councilman Parker is on the line, so he may be able to speak to that. I do feel that it's not consistent with the feedback that we got from the neighborhood. We did hold three public hearings, one of which Mr. Jordan was present at. And the overwhelming view of the neighborhood was in support of the project for many of the reasons that staff recommended. We went to great lengths to have conversations with many stakeholders. We got letters of support from the president of both the McFerrin Park and the Cleveland Park Associations and worked really hard to work with the staff as well. So I feel like that I certainly respect the opinion. I don't feel like it's consistent with what we heard from the neighborhood in any of our public hearing meetings, and it seems to be more aligned with frustration on another project, which I believe Mr. Jordan worked on as a development consultant for Mr. Wright. So I'd like to just mention that to make sure that the commissioners are aware of it, and I'll let Councilman Parker speak since I certainly was not a part of that other development and can't speak to the merits of that project.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the reminder to call on Councilman Parker. Would you like to join us?
Yes, this is Councilman Parker. Can y'all hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, so I want to just kind of recap this, this project. The, the development group has, as we detailed in the last meeting, they had an extensive engagement process with the community, meeting with McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association twice and the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association once. And I followed up, I wasn't able to attend every one of those meetings, but I think I attended two of the three. And the ones I wasn't at, I followed up with some of my constituents who I knew were in the room and, you know, just to make sure that the feedback I was hearing is what was going on. And the community has been very receptive to this, to this project. I think that's kind of underscored by the amount of support we have from folks in the Cleveland Park and, and McFerrin Park neighborhoods. And, you know, I, Mr. Wright mentioned his, his project as, as, as being sort of a reason for his opposition to this project. And I, I think that the, the issues that Mr. Wright ran into were that the project was, I, when, when we first met about it, I, I might say that it was represented as, maybe something that the final product would not be. And so, so when I invited him to meet with the community, there was sort of this disparity between what, what it had been presented to me as and then what it was now being presented as. And there was some pushback from the community about the proposal. And there was very little willingness on, on that team's part to engage with the community. And, you know, my, my first job is to represent my constituents and to fairly gauge the feelings of my community when it comes time to weigh in on a project. And my community was not supportive of that project as was. There was a very clear path forward, but the team did not want to work with us. And so ultimately, that's why I did not support that project. You know, they ended up accomplishing, I believe, most of what they wanted by going to BZA and getting a height plane variance, which, you know, that's well within their rights to do, and they did that. So I, I don't believe that we should weigh the merits or demerits of that project against this one. And also, I would just like to thank, you know, all the, all the constituents and community members who have attended meetings on this, thank the development team for being responsive and, and engaging, and also thank the staff for, for the, the work they've done on, on this project. And so, so I am, I am still supportive of this project and, and I'm glad that, I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any, any questions if there, if there are any from, from commissioners. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we will call on you if needed. So Commissioners, with that, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and we will start our discussion. Commissioner Haynes, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you.
I thought you might do so. I've read the memo, a couple of questions from the meeting a month ago. Maybe the applicant or staff could answer, what are the proposed clear heights of each floor and what is the total height of the project?
I, one second. I don't have the, the height of each floor.
Abby, let's, let's, I think the applicant needs to answer that. That's a specific detailed question about the project. Sure.
Is applicant on the line still?
Yes, we are still on the line. We are working on pulling that up with the architect team right now. Apologize, we don't have those details. If it's possible to come back to that, we're going to check with our, our design team to make sure that we're actually accurate with those specific details.
Sure, thank you. Commissioner Haynes, do you have some additional questions while they're pulling that up?
Well, in, in general, I'm in support of staff's recommendation. I think this is less about the number of stories and more about the total height of the project. I think the applicant has done a very good job in bringing this building to the street and hiding the fifth floor. I think this project is going to activate the Dickerson Corridor. And I'm less concerned about the number of stories of the building and more concerned about what the total height is.
Well, why don't we go on to the next commissioner? And then I'll come back to you once we have that information on the, once the applicant has the information on the height. Does that work?
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Sure. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, so I was, look, just a couple of little questions, I guess. I noticed that part of the alley widening is part of one of the conditions of the traffic and, what you call it, public works, I guess. Is that just for this area? I noticed by one of the diagrams, and it might be an old diagram, but it's just the amount of traffic that's going to be coming down there. Let me just ask that question. Is it, how far down? Is it the entire alley?
That is another question for the applicant, I guess, or the, or staff?
Or, or staff, who? Maybe staff, it doesn't matter.
Do we have public works on the line?
It may have been traffic and parking, actually. I think it was traffic and parking.
This is from the Public Works Department. The applicant is proposing to overlay the alley to the north, back out to the public street.
Okay, thank you, because I, I did notice that, you know, there's, since the entire, all the circulate, all the vehicle circulation is through the alley, I wanted to make sure that that was going to be covered by it. So, and, and, you know, and I, I would say generally I'm in support of it. I was actually really curious of actual items of opposition and I didn't get a lot of items but, from them. But I did have, I was kind of like with Commissioner Haynes, I was curious about where, where are we with height for it as that was, you know, our sticking point of the last meeting, last time this, this project was discussed. So once the applicant is able to answer that, that'll help me make my decision. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. I will just give the applicant one moment. And if, and if we still have not had a chance to gather the height information, then I'll just come back to you after all of the commissioners have had their chance of asking some questions. But is the applicant on the line and are you prepared to answer that question?
Yes, ma'am, I am on the line. I am very close to being prepared to answering that question. We are wrapping up the conversation with the architect right now, just making sure we have clarity on the question asked.
Great. Well, I'm going to just let all the other commissioners go through their questions and I'll come back to you at the end.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Gobble?
Well, again, I think I'm, I did, I did let the record show, I did watch the public hearing, even though I wasn't in the meeting. I tend to think everybody made good comments, but since this is a, this, this project is kind of a first project out there, I think without having a context, I think it's, it's kind of, I agree with the staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I think I have read staff memo and staff analysis carefully again. And I, it's, it's clear that when, you know, staff, planning staff and the community did meet and going through exercise or rather visioning session, how overall Dickerson Corridor should be developed, and, you know, height difference and transition and so forth. And I think everybody agree on intent, but after I read all the document carefully, my conclusion is we came up with three-story, five-story, six-stories and 10-stories. But I think this is a question to staff. Have we ever agreed on height limit on each building or just kind of, everybody has different interpretation of the height, just kind of put the number as a story? Is there any staff?
Thank you, thank you for that question. You know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, staff tried to tailor discussions and policy outcomes based on the conversation that we have with, with communities. And Councilwoman Murphy will probably be able to speak to how we approach this on Charlotte, for example. Very often, we do talk in terms of stories, but that's really for simplicity's sake. We don't get into fine-grained details usually about what happens with penthouses or what happens with incomplete or partial stories or, you know, floor-to-ceiling heights. We don't get into that fine of, of a level of detail because we do want there to be an opportunity for the commission to interpret the, the outcomes as projects are proposed following, following the, the adoption of the policy. Very often, we will offer a range and say that with additional height can be supported with quality design, open space or other factors and the like. That, that was not a product of this discussion on Dickerson. When we went and looked at the record, there wasn't that level of detail. And so I think if the community is open to it, then we can add that additional information and which we tried to do in, in the memo. So the, the number of stories, I will admit, is something of a blunt instrument, but it's something that we find useful when we're talking big picture about urban design on corridors. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you. So I think, you know, it's important thing is in here and this, or any other area, just the community involvement and engagement. And in this case, you know, we do have rather a good portion of community support. And I think the developer applicant did a great job designing and addressing the intent of the policy. And, you know, at the same time, you know, I am kind of struggling because not, it is rare, everybody to agree on 100%. So even though, you know, some neighborhood association may support within that neighborhood association, you know, 104 people may not be approval of it. Or, you know, some, another neighborhood association may oppose it, but maybe opposing it strictly just a number. So it seems like it says four, now getting partial five, not fair. So I just want to be very fair and transparent and reasonable. At the same time, you know, we would like to interpret a community's intent and a policy's intent and would like to make a correct decision. So in that, you know, this case, it seems like intent is just a transition from I-65 to coming into good transition into neighborhood. And I think that goal is achieved. And, you know, try to have partially fifth floor and the positioning of fifth floor seems like a design itself is, will capture that intent. So, but at the same time, I just want to be very, very clear, everybody in that community are on the same page. So I will keep listening, you know, other commissioners' comment.
Great, thank you. I understand the applicant is ready to respond to some of the questions around height, so why don't we go ahead and let him answer that question, just in case that helps with the remaining commissioners' comments?
Yes, thank you. We apologize for the delay. We were able to confirm with the architect that the most recent massing elevations that we submitted have a max building height of 74 feet at the top of the building. As noted, some of the fifth floor, or the fifth floor is stepped down on the, on the wings and, and as it approaches the rear of the site, but that is the highest one of the building.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Haynes and Commissioner Tibbs, I will come back around to you at the end with that information in mind. Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. I'm glad that the applicant could find the, their height. 74 feet still sounds like a lot for, for five stories. And I guess I will just say it is, I, I'm surprised that they had to get that confirmed because this was clearly a, an important point for us at the last meeting and to not have that readily available was a little surprising. When the policy says four stories, at, at least in my district, four stories means four stories. But as it was mentioned with the Charlotte Corridor study, what we did is you can get a height bonus if there's a trade-off for the community. And, and what my community came up with was if we get green space available to us, we are willing to trade off and give you extra height. I would like to hear that, that since this is five stories, there was, there was something, some trade-off to the community other than, oh, well, they're meeting all the other important goals of the policy, so we'll give them an extra fifth story. That's usually not how I've heard staff recommendations go in the past, so that's a little surprising to me. But if the councilman is okay with, with the policy allowing five stories here when the policy is four stories, I guess, could we go back to the slide that shows where it goes from six stories to four stories? Is that possible? Kind of color-coded one? So, so what I'm seeing here is it is kind of in the middle of, of, it's not... So, so what I'm seeing here is it is kind of in the middle of, of, it's not, you know, you want to transition from four to five, and so I understand that. And, and it is, it does seem to be potentially on the, the boundary of where you go from four stories to six stories. So, again, if the council member is okay with going above that without some community trade-off, then, then I'm okay with that. Um, but 75 feet is, that does sound mighty tall to me for just five stories. But I, I, I'd love to hear, um, Mr. Haynes and Mr. Gobble's input now that they know the height.
Well, Commissioner Haynes, would you like to go ahead and, and finish your comments? And then I will, um, go to our remaining commissioner.
Sure. Let, let me ask staff a question about the policy. Within a four-story policy, could a structure have a mechanical penthouse on the roof? Or not?
So, um, I know Mr. Claxton, uh, who is head of our policy section can answer. In zoning, you can, and very often we'll try to, um, we, we don't want to be as specific in zoning, but we'll try to utilize principles of zoning for clarity. So, I'd, I'd ask Greg, um, to respond, um, from a policy perspective.
Yes, Commissioner, this is, uh, Greg Claxton with the Planning Department. Um, I, I would concur. I mean, we would, we tend to follow, you know, generally the, the rough allowances of what you can do with zoning when we would, would look at this. Um, we do have in a, uh, MULA, uh, the zoning district identified as an appropriate zoning district. So, if that's something that would be permissible under, under that zoning, it would make sense and be appropriate in, um, in this policy.
So, a, a mechanical penthouse would be allowed under the existing four-story policy here?
That's correct.
So, given that that is the case, even Councilwoman Murphy, I agree with you, 74 feet is, is relatively tall. Um, I, I think because this could be a, call it 65-foot, four-story commercial structure with a 10 to 12 to 15-foot penthouse, and the design would not be in keeping with what we're trying to accomplish here. I think the applicant has done a good job, has responded well, um, with a, with a design that works. Um, and while I don't like going against the four-story policy, this quickly, I, I do think this is a project that deserves our support.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Haynes. Um, Commissioner Sims?
Commissioner, uh, forgive me for interrupting. This is Lucy. May I advise, um, that everyone mute who is not speaking? Because we're getting a little background noise. And so, I just want to remind everyone to place your, your phones on mute unless, um, the vice chair's called on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sims?
Okay. I want to thank, first of all, the commissioners that have raised the height issue. That helped me a lot. Um, this is a, and I've really struggled with this. I mean, down to the point where I called, uh, Greg and, and Mr. Lehman and Mr. Claxton to try to get their advice on this particular one. I think we have a great example here of the difficulty of competing goals. I think we have a goal that has to do with the corridor and then we have a goal with neighborhood evolving, um, affordable neighborhoods and how we balance those two goals. And we can't, I struggle because it kind of puts us in an either-or situation. And I think there's a way for us to do both and. I do know that this, I went and, I, I was so troubled by it. I just went and really looked at this property. And I think this is a great project for that part of the corridor and would probably give it impetus to keep developing in the way that we can envision it. At the same wa- same time, this plan actually makes the street, I, in the backyard of some really older, really, um, original tenants of the street right here, Joseph Street, um, that are troubled by this. And I'm surprised there are not some kinds of buffer systems here. In essence, we've created a street in their backyard and we've done nothing to try to minimize the noise. And this is going to be a 100-room hotel plus a restaurant. We've basically turned that whole street into, the alley into a street for them. And I think there's some way, as Councilwoman Murphy mentioned, that we can compensate somehow the neighborhood. And I know that, as Bob says sometimes, that condition that can't be upheld is not a condition at all. I do think that for those neighbors who may want fence or may want greenery as a buffer to this thing, we can make that a condition. Some may not want that, but my major concern has to do with the original tenants. We have so few tools in our toolbox that can help us maintain affordability, make sure that we have inclusive neighborhoods, that to risk these houses, and it looks like there's probably 10 or 12 of them, that could set the tone for turning that neighborhood. I want us to be really careful how we're doing this. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Um, Commissioner Tibbs or Commissioner Gobble, um, you both may have also had some additional questions once we got some additional information from the applicant. Have your questions been answered or, um, either of you have any further comments?
I, I did. This is Commissioner Tibbs, um, just jumping in before he run real quick. But could you go back one more time to the slide that showed the step back? Um, and, um, I listened to you, to Commissioner Haynes. Are we saying that the fifth story is just a mechanical system? Is that what you're, is that what was being said then? Just a penthouse, I'm sorry?
Brian, this is Jeff. No, that's not what I was saying. The fifth floor as proposed has, has hotel rooms, but another applicant could come in with a four-story structure and have a mechanical penthouse under the current policy, and it would exceed the potential 74-foot height difference project.
Okay, all right. That's what I was about to say. Did I miss, is this a four-story with a penthouse or is it a five-story with a penthouse? So, okay, I apologize, uh, I was listening to Jeff too hard there. Okay, but it is, so it is just a five-story then? It's not a five-story with a penthouse? It is just a five-story? That's correct, staff?
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing that Jeff said, and, um, uh, so the, I, the, those floor tos, uh, I guess the floor, finished floor to finished floor is about 14 eight. Are they all the same or is there like, uh, on the first floor? Is there, um, is that higher? I mean, typically hotel floor-to-floor heights are more stacked than this. Uh, and, and where I'm going is, I'm just curious about the extra height. As Commissioner Councilman Murphy brought up, 74 feet is still high. And, and thank you, Commissioner Sims, for also, I, I was one that brought up about making sure that from a traffic and parking standpoint about the, um, road. And I am hitting on two points here, but one is the height is high. And also, I am, I, with Commissioner Sims, I wonder about, uh, the buffering. It, well, and I don't know where there's actually a spot for a buffer, actually the way the alley will be constructed. But those two things are, give me a little concern about this. Um, maybe, um, maybe I should just ask staff, you know, is there, um, the height, I know is the height, we kind of talked about that. But let me, let me just specifically talk about the alley. Is there any concern, kind of what Commissioner Sims brought up, uh, regarding, we really are turning in this, we have to turn it into more of an access road because, you know, there's all types of deliveries and everything that's going to be coming to a hotel. Was there any concern about how that layered back to the three-story, you know, lower density? Or, you know, different use behind it? Was that kind of clear? I kind of jumped around a little bit, but, sorry about that.
Hi, Commissioner Tibbs, this is Lisa with Metro Planning. Um, the site plan is up on your screen as you can see. Um, so there is not any landscaping or buffering. Um, you can see from the layout that is proposed on the parking, um, that there are parking spaces coming off of the alley. And so, you would not be able to create sort of a buffer, um, given where those parking spaces are located. I also wanted to, um, sort of go back to this slide, um, where you can see the extent of the building and the distance of how far the building is pulled off of the alley. Um, and so, you know, there are other businesses along this stretch of the alley that are currently using it. Um, it also serves as the aerial access, um, for, um, fire trucks. And so, you have to, you know, keep alleys clear sort of for those types of uses as well. Does that, um, does that help at all?
Um, it, I mean, it does help. It kind of definitely helps my first argument about, you know, how, how this, how is alley going to be, um, upgraded for this use? And now I, you know, apparently there's a lot of businesses that was used. Um, like Commissioner Sims, I feel like there is some drawback for that. But I guess in the long run, you know, this is probably the most appropriate way to do it. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I'm encouraged by this. I think this is a good development, you know? And I, I think the applicant is work, you know, to try to get this to, make it work better for the community. I appreciate that there've been community meetings and that the, uh, because the councilman is behind it and even, you know, even though it's a little bit tall, I think as well, um, I'm also willing to support, um, staff recommendation.
Okay. I think that we have heard from all of the commissioners that are, that are able to hear this item. Um, I am now in need of a motion or if anyone else has additional questions, um, raise your hand and Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Um, before we go to motion, uh, as a condition, because, uh, Commissioner Sims, uh, raised that really good question. I mean, alley is the m- major way for this, uh, building to come in and out. Uh, that will increase dramatically the backyard traffic. So, is there any, can we add any condition to have a, some sort of buffer going into neighborhood? Would that be feasible? In the alley, so just kind of sealed the noise or a better transition?
Um, hi, this is Lisa, um, with Metro Planning. So, what we ha- we do have, um, and let me, let me go back to one of the aerial photos here. So, we do, this is an existing alley that is utilized by the businesses that run along Dickerson Pike. Um, there would not be any sort of buffer requirement. And I think that, and they are meeting the, the 20-foot, um, minimum required setback and then most of the building is exceeding that. Um, I'm not sure that there, and the, these parking spaces actually come in off of the alley. Um, and so, given the location of parking spaces, the trash and the drive aisle, um, I'm not sure that there is room, um, to be able to put in any sort of buffering and for the site to function as designed.
Well, thank you. So, perhaps, uh, that will be, uh, a district council member to come up with creative solution. Like, you know, uh, one of the project we had is we did not have any specific, uh, requirement or tree on that developed area. But, you know, some developer were able to put, uh, like a brush onto that existing, uh, community's backyard as a kind of trade-off. So, if, uh, community desire, if, you know, those not, uh, outside of this as a, a goodwill discussion, so, you know, I would like, uh, to see district commis- uh, council member work with the community and developer if needed or as needed. So, that would be, you know, better solution.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Sims, could you have your hand up for another comment?
Uh, yes, Chairwoman. Um, I think I want to take it a little step further and try to make it a condition. This is an incredibly creative pla- uh, plan. And I just can't believe that people putting their head together can't figure out some way to protect one of our affordable, inclusive neighborhoods from becoming a street and there not be any kind of compensation in terms of noise or sight of the back of the hotel. Um, and so, I would like to put it as a condition and leave it to the creativity of the people who came up with this plan to figure that out.
Um, Lucy or Lisa, can you speak to Commissioner Sims?
Uh, the commission? So, go ahead, Lisa, sorry.
Sure, I did want to, I did want to point out one thing that I feel like is an important element to this discussion. Um, the properties that are along Dickerson Pike are currently zoned CL. Um, that allows a certain level of intensity of development and also allows for residential development through the use of adaptive residential. Um, if, there would not be any buffer, or there's not a buffer requirement where an alley separates the commercial property from a residential property. So, if these were to develop under, say, the existing, um, zoning, either through regular CL or the adaptive residential, a buffer would not be required. Additionally, if re-zoned to MULA, um, a buffer would not be required. The code specifies that where there is an intervening alley between the commercial property and the residential, that a landscape buffer yard is not required.
Okay, so let me, thank you, Lisa. So, with that technical input, I would ask Commissioner Sims if you'd still like to develop, uh, a condition. Um, and if you would, we would just need to better, we can, we can add conditions to, to SPs. Um, and it's just a matter of how, how we want to phrase it. We did want to make sure that, um, you had the full picture of, um, what the other requirements would be elsewhere on the corridor.
Right. Yes, if they weren't asking for an SP, I think it would be different. If they were just coming in with what's already easily allowable, then that would be different. But we're also turning 10 or 12 homes backyard into a major street for a hotel. That's, to me, very different than another commercial building that might come along that has less traffic than this is actually going to produce. So, I would develop a condition, yeah.
Okay, so, um, develop a condition, uh, for a buffer?
Yes.
Um, okay. Um, let me, let me work on a little bit of language and then, um, and then, uh, can you give me just, just half a minute? Vice Chair?
I sure can, and I have multiple other commissioners who would like to say something. So, um, you take your time and I will go through the list. Um, Commissioner Gobble?
Well, I'd kind of like to, I, I don't mind recommending they look for a solution or a buffer, but the, the fact is, is that we are, we're encouraging a four-story building. There's not going to be any kind of buffer that's going to really hide the height of this thing. And I just think that we're not being logical in this, in this, uh, concept. I think that, you know, I, so I, I'm not in favor of making that a condition.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I, I mean, while a buffer would be nice, I don't see how a buffer could fit here logistically. Um, I don't think like, having, having flashbacks of like some type of flood wall that could be raised up. Um, but, uh, maybe, maybe we could hear from the councilman again about if the community have asked for any type of buffer or if that had been discussed or any ideas thrown out there. But, um, I didn't know if it would be appropriate to hear from the councilman again at this point and hear a little bit more about the, the neighborhood's, um, reaction, um, and some of those community meetings.
Sure, it looks like, um, Councilman Parker is still on the line?
I am still here. Um, so, I'm actually really glad that this, um, conversation went this direction because, um, you know, this is in a MDHA redevelopment district and they are really pushing, and they are really pushing, you know, this orientation of all traffic through these alleyways to, to sort of eliminate the curb cuts along Dickerson, which are very, as it is, they're, they're very common. I mean, there, there are stretches of Dickerson that are, I think, more curb cut than sidewalk at this point. So I, I, I do support those, those design goals and guidelines of, of making it a more walkable corridor and of, of pushing traffic to this alley. But, you know, this is something that I'm going to be grappling with, I think, my entire term as, as Dickerson develops is, is how we, you know, accommodate traffic through a, you know, relatively narrow alley. Thankfully, this one, I, I believe I saw that this is 20-foot or maybe 20-foot is the improved width. I'm not sure. But yeah, I mean, this is something that, that I take very, very seriously and I think it's going to be a consistent theme as Dickerson develops. So I, I know that the applicant, I mean, we've, we've discussed this just kind of in passing. If there are, so, so let me just say that any, any buffering on the, the east side of the alley, right, I think would, would not necessarily be against the height of the structure. I think it would be against the additional traffic which is introduced into that, to the alleyway. And I, I, it's my understanding that the applicant would be willing to, you know, work with, with the, the property owners to, to make some kind of improvement. I'm not sure if that's something where we would need to go parcel by parcel because some folks might not want their fence messed with, some folks might not want their shrubberies messed with, whatever they have back there right now, they might not want that touched. But if there is a way to make a condition where, you know, oh, if the applicant was willing to, say, help move a fence back six inches or do something or, I, I, I think that they would be open to that. I, I, I can't speak for them because we've only spoken about that in passing. But generally, yes, I, I, I do think that we're going to need, as Dickerson develops, to look at how we, you know, accommodate. Because this is, this is not going to be just this parcel. I mean, MDHA's design guidelines are stringent on this. They want the traffic moving through these alleyways. And so if this is a case for us to set a precedent, I would be very open to that as someone who will be dealing with development in, in concert with these MDHA guidelines for the remainder of my term. So I, I, I really appreciate the discussion and appreciate whatever commissioners come up with here.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy, do you have any additional comments? I see your hand still up. Do you have additional comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me take that down. But I will say, it does look like the alley is 24 feet wide. And I will say that I do have, in my district, I do have some streets that are, that are not even as wide as that alley. So I can see where buffering would be nice. I'm just not sure it's possible or realistic here. But, but yes, in an ideal world, there would be, there would be something like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, this is Lucy. It sounds like you have a couple of different directions that commissioners want to go. And just to help facilitate discussion, one scenario is we could have a general condition. We often don't put these in the SPs because they're not perhaps as specific as we would like. But one idea would be to say that the applicant is required to work with the council member in neighboring properties to plant landscaping on the neighboring property side if the neighbors so choose. And so again, that, that does leave some openness to solving the problem. So that's one scenario. Another is to require the landscape buffer on this property. I think it would result in site changes. And it sounds like there may be some differences of opinion there. But for purposes of emotion, those are two possible directions.
Thank you. Okay, that helps. As a point of clarification, should we at some point also ask the applicant at this point about, about? Or is it just, is this a purely a commission-led decision?
I am still on the line and would be happy to comment if it's appropriate.
Okay, let, let me wait and see which direction we end up going and, and then we may call on you. Commissioner Sims?
Yes, I want to thank the councilman very much. And I just want to say once again for the record that I don't want us to get in an either/or and this has nothing to do with hiding the height. I think that's exactly right, Commissioner Gobble. There isn't anything that can do that. It's more of sending a message to this neighborhood that we are aware that the, the plans in the future are going to impact your life and we want to pay attention to that. So I really appreciate the councilman's willingness to look at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you Chair. I would like, I, I'd like the suggestion from Director Kemp, the first suggestion. I think her wording was perfect. If it leave it to the developer applicant and council member and the community and if they so choose, so they could have some kind of buffer if they want to. So that would be a perfect condition to me. But I don't want to impose the condition, you know, and it's not feasible. So I'm willing to hear from the applicant if the applicant is willing to work with council member and the neighbors directly behind that proposed, the project.
Great, thank you. Well, if the applicant is on the line, if you would like to respond to the commissioner's comment?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I think that, as Director Kemp mentioned, the first opportunity where we can work with the council member as well as the owners of the property and if they so desire to have a landscape buffer, which I think would look really nice on, on their side of the property or if they would like fencing, we would be very willing to do that. It's only a handful of homes. I believe it's four or five houses that are directly behind us. And I think my only concern with putting it on our property is we would lose most likely a row of parking spaces. And that was one thing that was important to the constituents when we met with them is that they wanted to make sure that we had adequate parking. So however, if it would lessen the, the noise or the view of the cars by us either adding a fence or some landscape buffering, I think, I know for a fact that's something that our development team would be willing to agree to and we would be fine with that as it was mentioned by Director Kemp being a, a condition.
Great. So I'm scrolling through all of your names again, just a second. And I do not see any other hands raised. So it sounds like we have gone, found some consensus around the possibility of an additional condition. But now I think it's time for someone to make a motion. Commissioner Haines?
I will move approval of staff's recommendation with the added condition that the applicant work with the council person and the neighbors impacted by the project on landscaping buffers and/or fences if the neighbors so choose.
That is a very well-stated motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Johnson?
My second motion.
Wonderful. Any other discussion on this item? Being none, I will do a roll call vote once again. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haines?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Ted?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the majority, so motion carries. Great. So I think we are now on to our final item, item 30. And Lisa, if you want to go ahead and, and bring up the slideshow? And we're ready when you are.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. This is Jason Swager with the Metro Planning Department. I will be presenting item number 30. This is a request to cancel a planned unit development. Next slide. Next slide please. The approximately four and a half acre site is outlined in blue. It is located in the Madison area between Forest Park Drive and Lanier Drive. Old Hickory Boulevard is to the north and Neely's Bend Road is to the south. This site is situated behind Robin Hood condominiums. Robin Hood condominiums has access to Forest Park Road and the subject site is landlocked. Next slide. Staff is recommending approval of the cancellation. This slide shows the approved planned unit development. It was approved in 1984 for 54 residential units. The plan was noted as phase two of the Robin Hood condominiums, which existed at the time the plan was approved. The base zoning district is RM15, permits up to 15 units per acre. If the planned unit development were canceled, the underlying zoning would permit up to a maximum of 68 units. Next slide. You can go to two slides. This is in the Madison community planning area and the policy is urban neighborhood evolving. Please note that the staff report incorrectly cited the policy as suburban. Urban neighborhood involving is intended to provide a variety of housing types, including single-family and multifamily. It supports moderate to high densities with location determining appropriate density. The policy supports a form that is generally more urban in design with shallow setbacks and buildings that may be closer together than what you would find in suburban areas. Next slide. Staff finds that the underlying RM15 zoning district is consistent with the policy. RM15 permits a housing type that is currently permitted, but with a slightly higher density. This allows for additional housing choice in the area. While the permitted density is slightly higher, it maintains an appropriate transition from the existing Robin Hood condominiums to the single-family neighborhood abutting the eastern property line of the subject site. RM15 also permits development that is consistent with the existing Robin Hood condominiums. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the cancellation as the underlying RM15 zoning district is consistent with the land use policy.
Great, thank you Jason. With that, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant on the line?
Vice Chair, you do have representatives of the applicant on the line and they should be unmuted and able to speak.
Great, and as a reminder to the applicant, you'll have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and you will be able to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Sean will be keeping track of your time and will notify you when you're getting close to the end of your 10-minute window. And we're ready when you are.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
We can hear you, thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right, so good afternoon. My name is Daniel Smola and I'm a civil engineer with Harper Civil Incorporated located here in Nashville at 179 Bell Forest Circle at Suite 204E. I'd like to thank you all for your time this afternoon and hearing our case for the pub cancellation of the Robin Hood condominiums phase two. As I understand it, my client, Mr. Ronnie Kelly, owner of locally owned and operated RK Junior Construction is in attendance along with additional representation by Mr. Doug Sloan. As indicated in the staff report, Robin Hood condominiums phase one includes approximately 88 multifamily units, which was developed sometime in the early to mid 80s. Around that same time, the pud for the phase two completed, which was included 54 multifamily units. The multifamily development currently entitled by the approved phase two pud aligns more with the housing characteristics of the existing phase one multifamily development rather than the characteristics of the single-family neighborhood to the east along Lanier Road. For this reason, Mr. Kelly has requested the cancellation of the pud to develop the property based on the current development pattern, neighborhood characteristics and planning policy. The removal of the pud would allow the development to revert to RM15 base zoning and provide a greater opportunity for revised layout and transition of density than permitted by the current pud. This includes the desire by Mr. Kelly to construct single-family townhomes along the eastern boundary shared by the single-family residents on Lanier Road. The higher density units, which would include attached townhomes on the north side of the site and possible multi-story flats along the west side adjacent to existing Robin Hood phase one. The transition in density and character would not be permitted by the current pud as shown. We've been in contact with Councilwoman Katania Hancock, who has been helpful throughout the process and have recently become aware of some neighboring concerns regarding stormwater, traffic and overall desire for more information on potential future development. We always understand and take seriously the concerns of the adjacent property owners. When the time comes that the developer proceeds with design and permitting, plans and calculations will be submitted to Metro Department, including stormwater and public works that ensure site compliance with ordinance requirements and ease some of the community's concerns we've heard so far. In summary, Mr. Kelly worked hard and spent quite a bit of own money to better understand the impact of the pud removal and the benefits it could provide in utilizing the base zoning rather than the approved pud plan. In addition, we ask that you keep in mind the request is only for the removal of the existing pud and not approval for future development. At that time, I'd like to request your approval and agreement, staff recommendation, and offer up the rest of my time to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you very much. And as a reminder, you'll have your two minutes for rebuttal. So at this point, we will go ahead and see if we have any callers on, on the line or go ahead and suggest that callers go, start calling in. And there should be a call-in number on your screen. And as this is our last case, please make sure if you're calling in, you're calling about this specific case. And when you begin your testimony, you will state your name and address and whether you support or oppose this item. We do not have the ability to display a timer virtually. But Sean will be keeping track of time and will let you know when there's a 30-second, when you have 30 seconds left in your, in your time. And while we're waiting for callers to get into the queue, Lisa, did we receive any voicemails or emails on this item?
We received no voicemails, but we did receive three emails in opposition.
Great, okay. Do we have any callers that have called in?
Vice Chair, we do have some callers starting to call in that we'll put into the meeting. I did want to say, just for the record, we have the ability to, to put a number of callers in the queue. So if the public is listening and they do intend to call for this meeting, there's no reason to wait till the caller ahead of them completes their statement. You can go ahead and call while other people are speaking and you'll be, you'll be put in a lineup to go into the meeting. So I don't want people to feel like we can only take one at a time and then hold off on calling. We can take you many at once and we'll get you in a line. So with that, we do have the first caller on the line.
Great. And we will
Into the meeting in just a second.
Great, thank you Sean.
And Vice Chair, you have the, you have the caller now.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you to the caller for joining us. Please state your name and address and you will have two minutes for your comments. And remember to state if you are opposed or in support of this item.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Okay. My name is Nancy Stein. I own a condo in Robin Hood. It's building three, number eight. And I just, I, I am against this because I don't really understand what's going on. And, and I haven't had a public meeting. I haven't gotten to go to a public meeting. And I wanted to have a meeting with the planners and developers to have them talk to us about this because for one, one of my concerns is it looks like all the traffic from the new addition would be coming in off of Forest Park and then going all the way back. That's going to be a disaster. And I just need to know. I wish we could have a public hearing. Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you for calling in. Sean, are we ready for our next caller?
We are getting ready to place them in the meeting. And you have the next caller now.
Great, thank you so much for calling in. And as a reminder, please state your name and address and you'll have two minutes for your comments.
Hi, this is Alisa Walling. I own 410 Lanier Drive. And I feel like I oppose this, but it's because I don't fully understand it. My concern is with the removal of the PUD. It sounds like we're just going to be leaving it wide open for the developer to do whatever they want to do with no protections for the current homeowners. So Lanier Drive is a very quiet, single-family home, street, and just would like to keep it that way. Don't want a lot of foot traffic or noise coming in our backyards that are very quiet now. So would like a better understanding of what restrictions the developer will have to adhere to moving forward if this is removed and what protections there are for the homeowners as far as some type of buffer, be it a wall, landscaping, something to keep foot traffic, just absolutely not allow it basically, and noise and beauty. So I have some questions before knowing whether to approve or disapprove. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sean, do we have another caller?
We do have another caller on the line. We're just working with the caller to get their devices muted so we don't get an echo. And you should have the next caller now.
Great, thank you so much and welcome. Please state your name and address and tell us whether you're in support or opposition of this item.
My name is Patty Vaughn. I own a condo in Robin Hood condominiums, building seven, unit six, and I'm opposed. I also am a member of the Board of Trustees there.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Any further comments? We can hear you.
Okay. I'm on the Board of Trustees there. And my concern is with the change in the PUD, that changes our master deed. And changing our master deed nullifies so much of what the Board of Trustees is in place to do. I would love to talk to the Metro Public Works, the council person, Hancock for their district, and the developer. We would love to set up a meeting with them so that we can get a clear indication of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that under advisement when we have our Commissioner discussion. Sean, do we have any other callers on the line?
We don't have any other callers in the queue, so we'll just take a pause to give any other folks who may be listening and want to call in some time to do that. And I think we do actually have another call coming in, so we'll hold on just a second and try to get them into the meeting.
Great, thank you.
And you have the next caller now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, and please state your name and address. You have two minutes and state whether you are opposed or in support of this item.
My name is Elizabeth Jeffers and my address is thirteen thirty-six Old Hickory Boulevard in Nashville, Tennessee, three seven two oh seven. And I am an owner of six units at the Robin Hood condominiums. And I am the current president of the Robin Hood Homeowners Association. And I'm requesting to know the short and long term. I actually am in opposition for right now until we know more. We need to know the long and short-term plans for the new properties at phase two. And we would like to meet with the developers. And according to the supplemental master deed that we have that was made on May thirtieth, nineteen eighty-five, it did give access of the phase two property. But that expired on May thirtieth, nineteen ninety-two. And that's on page one fifty-one, book sixty-five sixty-nine, paragraph K. Anyway, that has expired, so there is actually no access to that. And originally, the development was to share common air and expenses for upkeep. Additionally, phase two contains, and they may not know this, it contains active wet weather springs out there. And I want to know if they've done any environmental investigations and if so, could we get a copy? Two years ago, we were placed in the theme of floodplain for part of Robin Hood. And some of that may have been caused by the single housing development there that was done by Lanier. But we do have some water issues that have-
Caller, you have thirty seconds.
Anyway, Robin Hood is privately owned and by owners and investors. And each of the owners has to maintain the common area by assessment. So we need to know exactly what's going on. I don't think we should go forward until we know. My name again is Elizabeth Jeffers and I'm the president of the Robin Hood Homeowners Association, requesting a meeting for the developers to come and speak with us at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sean, do we have any other callers?
We don't have any callers in the queue at this time, so we'll just take a brief pause in case anyone else is trying to reach us and then I'll check back in. Vice Chair, we do not have any other callers on the line at this time, so I think we've heard from those who intend to call.
Great, thank you so much, Sean. I'm going to turn it back to the applicant. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. And then following the applicant, invite the councilwoman to speak to the group.
Okay, very good. Can everybody hear me okay? Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. So with regard to some of the callers that had reached out, we certainly appreciate them taking time out of their evenings to voice some of their concerns. Some of the folks that are calling in, for example, Miss Alisa Walling at 410 Lanier, we certainly understand their concerns about providing buffers and making sure that their rear yards are maintained for privacy and vegetation perspective. The removal of the PUD would revert back to RM fifteen zoning, which would require a Class C landscape buffer be placed between the development and the single-family homes to the east along Lanier. A Class C buffer includes thirty feet of vegetation, most of which would be existing vegetation to be left in place that currently has a lot of density to it to provide that screening. But thirty feet along all properties that share a rear yard with Lanier would be provided for landscape buffers. With regard to some of the callers that have concerns about whether traffic coming through phase one or some of the D concerns, I mean, the D concerns are really private matters that will ultimately be solved through Mr. Ronnie's persistence in development, but those are really private matters and don't pertain to the the planning component and the PUD removal. We find that the PUD removal and reversion back to base zoning, again, is compliant with the planning policy for the area. As far as some of the concerns with regard to environmental features on the property, we've done our research with regard to TDEC maps and as of today, many features on the property don't classify as streams. But obviously, as we go through stormwater, any inquisition they may have or any evidence they would require as part of their policy, we would absolutely provide and comply with. So with that, I would just like to again thank everybody for their concerns and then voicing their opinions. And we certainly welcome communication moving forward.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Hancock, would you like to speak now?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your service and your patience this evening as we listen to all of the feedback. I do agree that it's unfortunate we didn't have a community meeting due to the timing of this proposal getting on the Planning Commission agenda. And with the pandemic sweeping across Nashville, I haven't had any community meetings in the district until this week since March. And this week, I started the in-person meetings up again. I did put the information in our newsletter and on the Madison Facebook development page. But everyone that I spoke to in the last couple of days about this only heard about it through the handy postcards that were delivered through the US Postal Service system. I do understand the concerns of stormwater. It's a big concern for one of the neighboring properties, the Madison Ball Field, as well as Robin Hood condominium phase two and the MDHA-owned property that's currently still vacant land behind both the Ball Field and this property. We do have a very recently scheduled meeting for next week. With Annie, you heard on the phone today, someone from Metro Water, Metro Stormwater, and myself, and probably my son since pandemic. And to meet next week and talk about the concerns in Robin Hood phase one to try to see if anything the city can do to help address that. You know, I'm no lawyer. I think that if the access rights were abandoned in ninety-two, that's one thing. But I do understand the concerns of the folks on Lanier. And if there's access from there, what that's going to do to their quiet street compared to Forest Park, not as quiet of a street. So I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I just wish that timing had been such so that we could have a public meeting and let people sit down in person with myself and the developer and talk about it. I do appreciate the developer reaching out to me. I think it was last September, which was very, you know, on the spot to tell me that this was the intention going down the road. And then after, I guess, acquiring the land or putting an option on it, you know, move forward with this proposal. One email that I did get that I don't know if it was shared because we received so much information this evening from the developer is talking, and this might be a calming factor for many of the people on Lanier and in Robin Hood condominiums, is that if we reverse to the base zoning of RM fifteen, the developer has planned that forty-three of the sixty-seven units would be single-family style homes, whereas the original PUD was one hundred percent multifamily. So that might make a bit of a difference with defects on Lanier for sure because they're all in single-family homes. So I wanted to point out that option. And then I just will trust the Planning Commission to make the right decision on whether we need to have a meeting now or if we should do that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Director, can I just get confirmation? I know Commissioner Haynes had to drop off at six-thirty, so I think he is no longer on the phone with us. Is that correct?
That is correct, but you do still have a forum, but let me just, I'm looking at the same panel as you are and I'm going to just confirm.
And I just want to confirm, Commissioner Blackshear, you are hearing this case. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those are my two questions. I think otherwise we're good. Okay, well, I will go ahead and start the discussion with the Commissioners. And Commissioner Sims, would you like to lead us off?
I'd be glad to. This one feels to me kind of as a no-brainer in terms that the councilwoman has said that she's willing to meet, that she has a meeting next week. The residents have asked for it. The only leverage the residents have at this point is to keep the PUD or not. Once they release that, they're losing almost all leverage they have to actually get their questions answered. So if there is a meeting planned next week, I would recommend that we defer this.
That seems like a reasonable point. I'll go ahead and allow other Commissioners to have their questions and comments. And then we'll come back if that seems like the direction we want to go with the motion. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I wish there was. I bet if, yeah, I wish that there had been more communication to the adjacent neighbors just so they would understand what was happening. I do believe that, I don't have a problem with the PUD cancellation, but if the applicant, if it's, you know, no other, I'm sorry about that. If there's no other issues to this, I would also recommend a deferral just so we can have the community meeting and go forward. Sorry about the extra noise.
Oh, understand. Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs. Commissioner Blackshear?
Yeah, like Commissioner Tibbs said, I wish the neighbors' questions could have been answered. Previously, it does seem reasonable per land use policy to approve staff's recommendations, but if the neighbors, one, don't understand exactly the ramifications of removing the PUD and there is a meeting that is planned very soon, then it does seem reasonable to wait. I would ask, are there any time restrictions that I'm not aware of where that waiting or deferral could cause any unintended consequences?
Hi, Commissioner, this is Lisa with Metro Planning. And there is no legislation that has been filed, so that there are no pending actions before council.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, it seems reasonable to follow Commissioner Sims' suggestion to just defer.
Sounds good. I'll ask the remaining three Commissioners if they have any other comments and then we'll revisit the idea of a deferral. Commissioner Gobble?
I can support a deferral. I mean, I think dropping the SP is probably, I mean, dropping the PUD is a logical thing to do. But I think going through the neighborhood, I agree with Dr. Sims on that.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. So since there's no pressing timeline for us to decide one way or other, at this point, with lack of information, deferring motion will be most appropriate. Thank you.
Great, and Councilwoman, I don't know why I keep wanting to call you Council Lady, I guess because that's also who you are. Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. Let me just, can I ask the councilwoman to clarify if the meeting next week is a community meeting? If it's been noticed as a community meeting? Or if this is just a meeting with her and the front Robin Hood HOA and the developers? Or can we just get that clarification? Because I do feel like this, I don't think that we're ready to remove this PUD. I think there are a lot of unknown questions. And I will say also, when the developer or the applicant said removing this PUD- doesn't approve future development, I mean, that's just, let's be honest, once we remove this PUD, they can develop it by right. So could I hear from the councilwoman again what type of meeting she's holding next week? And if she plans to have any community meetings?
Yes, thank you very much, Council Lady Murphy. I gave you two pieces of information, so it's my fault if there was any confusion. I did not have any community meetings in April or May. I started my community meetings again this week. And because of the pandemic, my meeting Tuesday morning, I only had one person, or usually I have about 20. And my meeting last night, I had about six people, usually, again, up to 20. And then I'll have a meeting on Saturday morning. I don't think it's fair to the community to try to get the word out in the next two days about Saturday morning's meeting and have that be it. The meeting that I was referring to next week is one that I scheduled based on Annie, who you heard from earlier, her request to me yesterday. So I scheduled this with Stormwater and Public Works. They're going to meet me out there next week. And Annie's going to show us exactly where the water problems are that they're having, the flooding situation, that every flash rain, you know, apparently affects a large number of the units. And they're concerned about additional development affecting that as well. So the meeting I have next week is not a public meeting. I will have three community meetings in July. And I'd be glad to work with the developers on those dates and let them pick the one that they, you know, feel would be best. And then have them help me communicate to all of these folks. Maybe if they want to do another mailer, letting them know about that date. Or, you know, we could go down the street, asking out flyers with contactless delivery, whatever works best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. I think with that being said, I don't know how many, I lost track of how many of us have talked.
You are our last one.
Okay, if I'm the last one, I'd like to just move to defer this to give the councilwoman some time to sort out some of the issues and potentially, you know, set up a, at least these developers need to get with the front Robinhood, I think. And so I think it would be extremely proper for this to be deferred at least two meetings.
That sounds like a proper motion. For clarification, Director, I have lost track of our meeting schedule. And I know last year, we only had one meeting in July. I don't know how that impacts anything, but could you give us the date?
Sure. So we've got the second meeting to, Councilwoman Murphy's motion would go to the July 23, 2020 meeting. We only have one meeting in July.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a second? Commissioner Tibbs?
I second that.
Great. Any other discussion on this item? If not, then I will go ahead and do the roll call vote. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This will be deferred until July 23. With that, I think we are on to, that's the end of the items that we are hearing, and we are on to other business. Anything from historic, Commissioner Tibbs?
No. The next meeting is next week, and Commissioner Johnson will be representing the Planning Commission.
Oh, I did not know that we had any representatives. Congratulations, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you very much. I will look forward to reporting something at the next meeting.
Sounds great. Parks report, Commissioner Haynes is no longer with us. Executive report, I do not think that we have anything from the executive committee other than thank you to staff, and thank you to IT, and thank you to the commissioners for just continuing to make this process work as smoothly as it's been going. And really appreciate everyone's support. Director Kemp, do you have any update for us?
I just wanted to thank all of you again for your service to the city. Also, did want to touch on a very difficult topic that I know is affecting all of us in Nashville and around the country, the devastating events of the last several weeks. And I wanted you to know that a number of staff have gotten together at the Planning Department to talk about steps that our department can take to ensure that the planning process is equitable, is fair. That can be everything from our procedures, but also the way we handle our public realm. And just ensuring that we have a perspective at the department that is forward-looking and fair and, you know, addresses the inequities that are so much in the forefront right now and need to remain in the forefront. And so I'm going to be working with the department, and I'd like to engage the commission when there's a good moment for us to have a conversation. I also wanted you to know that I'm part of a collaborative group of 25 of the planning directors from the 25 largest metro areas across the nation. And we are pulling together a subcommittee to look at everything from zoning policy to land use policy, and ensuring that we are taking head-on some of the fundamental issues that are coming to the forefront right now. And we're going to be, you know, I want to participate in that in part because my peers are thought leaders, but also because I want to make sure that the directions that we take in Nashville meet kind of best practices and take advantage of what some of the other departments are doing in terms of social justice, in terms of thinking about prejudice, and in terms of, you know, how we think about gentrification and change. I mean, there are a whole lot of very difficult topic areas here, but I think it's very clear that this is something that we need to look at. And anyway, so I did want you to know that that's at the forefront of my mind. Trying to think through how to approach the various issues and in a meaningful way. And so I'd be grateful for your feedback and having one-on-one conversations with you in the coming weeks and months. So, but that's my report.
Well, thank you for bringing that all up and for sharing the updates. I know I've seen quite a few of the articles on the Planning Association website lately addressing this topic, and definitely look forward to the possibility of maybe a commission workshop when it seems appropriate on this topic. I think it would be a really important thing for us to take on as soon as we feel like it'd be a great time.
Absolutely, thank you.
And finally, the legislative update. Council Lady Murphy, I know you've had some fun nights lately. Is there any updates you'd like to share with us?
Thank you. Yes, this last week, we had a special meeting that was the focus on catching up on our public hearings because of COVID and things. Again, our technology for a public hearing does not run as smoothly at the councils as it does here, unfortunately. But so we stayed until about 1:30, and we caught up in our next Planning Committee meeting at council. I just got the agenda, has 38 items. So we'll be catching up soon, I'm sure. But that's pretty much all I've got for now. And I'm happy to make a motion for adjournment if it is appropriate.
We would welcome that motion.
Great.
And I assume there is a second? Somebody willing to second the adjournment? Council Lady Johnson?
And the motion.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned, and we'll talk to you in a couple weeks.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.